Okay, let's open up tonight's committee, the whole meeting with flag salute. Okay, thank you all for coming. Let's have roll call.
Mrs. Cooper. Dr. Krupp.
Here.
Mrs. Krupp, here. Mr. Krumenacher.
Here.
Mrs. Krumenacher, here. Mrs. Lee, here. Mr. Schell. Mr. Bassel.
Here.
Mrs. Scholl.
Okay, do they get some patrons to sign up?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go into student recognition.
So I'm very pleased to recognize our TSA team this evening. We have Ava, I see, Ace, Drake, and Ben. Why don't you come on forward? Come on forward. And bring, yeah, do you have your trophy? Do you have everything with you? Sorry, it might get a little sexy, right? It didn't make the trip back from Florida. So, alright, so we're very proud of these individuals. They are first place in the nation. Absolutely. When your name was called, and because the looks on their faces was just priceless. So why don't you tell the board and the audience a little bit about your project and what you had to do?
We had to build a solar powered car that had to race six. Down in Florida, we both didn't have to race outside. So we went with a twenty-four year ratio, so you really powered through rocks and stuff like that. We got down there, get rained every day, so we raced inside. But they didn't have any much depth on anything. So we looked at, even in the past, it's been a pretty hard design, or no, it was a goddess.
Very good.
Do I do that again?
No.
Go ahead, go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, we went with the sword. I mean, we went with the surfboard design because we were in Florida. We thought beach theme and stuff like that. And, yeah.
So you not only had to race that, what else did you have to do as part of this competition?
We also had to create a box design, as you see. We had to also make a notebook explaining everything we used, what we did. And we also had to do an interview after we were done racing. So that bumped us up also in points, as long as with the race.
So they judged your time in your race, your presentation, and then your interview skills. Awesome. Alright, weren't you surprised? Very, very surprised. So what did you think up on the stage? What were your thoughts? Where did you think you were coming in?
Oh, we walked up there, the fastest car wasn't even up there.
Okay.
And the school that usually wins, they got called third.
Okay.
And like, we were like, oh, we probably won this though.
That's wonderful. Yeah, so I mean, I, I, I'm sure you realize what a huge honor this is. And something that you can be proud of the rest of your life, that you can top up, you know, winning a national competition just from, you know, little northern cavalry here. So we're so proud of you, and we're so glad that you're here. And I know your sponsors couldn't make it tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Klein, and I know they do so much work. And I want to thank parents too, because I know you have to put a lot of time and effort to support your students in all that they do. But thank you, board members, anything you'd like?
I have one question. In the one race, when you guys came from behind, how did you feel? Because I watched that video, it was amazing. That thing just shot out of a can if you can believe it. How did you feel in that?
Pretty good. A lot of cars don't even make it off the jump, so.
Yeah.
Because we know down there, they use metal like line instead of fishing line to race the cars. So there's a lot of like cars that even moved.
But that one race in particular was incredible. That was really well done.
And I do have some certificates for you. I know you have your hands full there, just reading that.
Thank you.
Great. Please. Yeah. Ava. And Ava, I gave them two, because Ava, why don't you tell about the second award that she got?
Um, so me and a friend teammate, Delilah and A, we placed, I think we got, yeah, we placed sixth place in structural engineering. And in structural engineering, it's all about building a bridge that meets requirements. And we have to make it as sturdy as possible, and it has to hold a lot of weight. So you have a good efficiency towards the end, so it can't weigh a lot either. And I joined the team late, and we placed third at states. So we went, or no, we placed first at states, and then we went to nationals and competed there. We had to build onsite at nationals. So while building, there wasn't a lot of kids in the competition, but the kids that were in the competition, they had really good bridges that held a lot of weight. But the one kid, they held three hundred pounds. And ours only held, I think, around one hundred. So it does take a lot of effort and a lot of mind to it. So that's also when I competed in while I was down there, but.
Thank you for all of your hard work, and I'm sure we'll have that on display. Alright, thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you, Mom and Dad. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into administrative reports superintendent.
Right, so lots of rumors floating around, so just want to address some of those. We are going to start school on time. We, Jeff and I have been meeting with site logic and meeting with the contractors every day to make sure things are going to be ready for our students or our teachers. Jeff's team is doing a great job. Sometimes they're asked to do things twice, unfortunately, but we're very, very pleased. They're even working on weekends so that we're ready for the start of school. Couple of rumors I'd like to address. We did have a gymnasium down here. One of the rumors was that we were going to have to bus kids up to the high school for gym class. That is not true. We are not starting virtually. We are starting as a regular school. So those are all good things. Our football field is ready. It looks great. Again, thanks to Jeff and your team for getting that ready. And the auction, we spoke of, we have a little change of plans with that. So we are going to store everything at this point in a camp, big C camp, outside the building. And then when we have everything compiled, then we'll work on doing the auction. We just ran out of time. It's just too difficult trying to get everything where it needs to be, making sure the school is ready. Title IX training, this is training that has come down from the feds. And I worked on updating the employee handbook, work on training our coaches. And I know the board's going to be looking at some policies and discussing those with Title IX. Next week, next Wednesday, we have our second town hall. That will be seven o'clock here in the auditorium. And our agenda will be talking about bullying, we'll be talking about a free dinner program that we're starting, and a discussion with parents about chronic absenteeism. And lastly, I have a few dates for everyone. Monday, August 12th at 6:00 PM is orientation for high school freshmen. Tuesday, August 13th at 10:00 AM is orientation for preschool and kindergarten. Wednesday, August 14th, 6:00 PM, fifth grade orientation here in the middle school. And then after school starts, Thursday, August 29th, from 5:00 to 7:30, will be our open house. There at the middle school, elementary, and at the high school. So we're very excited. We'll be starting a new school year, and it's coming quickly. So, thank you.
Or, what time is the open house?
The open house is five to seven thirty, so five. Twenty ninth, Thursday, August 24th.
Okay, principals, comment.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say, Dr. Passan, I just said about orientation. And I would like to mention too, not that we are all saying thank to Jeff tonight, but we have many of our current professionals working on the cleaning crew this summer too. So between Jeff's staff, Jeff, and all, well, the parents are now his crew, they are doing an amazing job. They're out front today cleaning up for orientation. Well, I don't think it's for orientation, but. Yeah, so the building will be very nice next Tuesday, but thank you very much. A lot of excitement in the building. Some of the teachers, they're starting to come in. It's nice to see people in the building again, getting their classrooms ready. As far as elementary, I've been working along with Dr. Passan on the elementary school plan for the year. I think that you're talking about that a little bit this evening. And tomorrow, we have new teacher orientation in central admin at nine o'clock. And lastly, Mrs. Gibbons wanted to say thank you for allowing them to go to the conference they're at now, receiving some of their hours that are needed there. They said it's an excellent training, and they can't wait to get back and share what they've learned. That's everything I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Middle school? Anyone do that?
No, they're.
High school, same thing?
Same thing, yeah.
Alright. Business manager?
I don't have anything to report. Same stuff. We are, well, one thing, we are starting the setup, preliminary information to the auditors for, you know, their start of the 23, 24 school year. Other than that, business as usual.
Have we started the appraisal of the high school property?
Contact, you go ahead.
I can address that. I called the appraiser two weeks ago. She was on vacation. I called again at the beginning of this week. She hasn't started scheduling any appraisals yet, but secretary assured me that they would give us a call. And they do want half the money down when they come to do the appraisal. So Roland has a check ready for that, so we're just waiting for that date.
Would you be able to send us an email to the entire board when that begins?
Certainly.
Okay, cafeteria? Everybody?
I think we have another here tonight.
And maintenance?
Good evening. I'm actually a few things we're working on. And I truly like to thank my staff for what they've been up to, and what they've been doing. They're doing a great job. While things are now out of sequence and out of normal, the way he's done, but they're doing a great job on that. But some things we were working on, off the track, bringing up a note of comment from the last meeting. The tables were modified, repaired, and we stained, so they're pretty beautiful. Taking a couple more seasons out of those. There are a couple pieces of those carpet blow off from the concession stand up there, and just put back on. There's a patching under, still, sealing, patching, and all the trim, exterior trimming. So still looking pretty decent up there. I know there's some other things that need to be done on the track part itself, want to do that at a later date. I saw the folks preparing that track up there. I guess I'll discuss it later, later time. Practice field, I had both those painted, and the handle leading up to the field painted, but I think that looks good. And there's panel top and grab cutting and sewing, so we'll continue that as weather goes on, as summer goes on. Main field, looking good, had a lot of painting down. All the lights have been fixed, replaced, or added, especially the emergency lights. So I think that's a good added feature down there. We were down there today and tested all the field lighting, sound system, the scoreboards, all seem to be functioning as they should at this point. Need some operator here, I think, on the control panel itself, but I think something to write first, so I think it should work fine. Bleacher board replacement, that's scheduled for Monday, August 12th. So we'll try to get done, please, by Friday. We'll be done by Friday. Cafeteria, had to be strapped clean and pumped up. Period facility as well as up at the high school, so that's done for the season. Ten first bricks done, completed, and waiting on callbacks and comings to come out and serve both of our generators. Here, one here and one other side. If those are ready to upcoming year. Show water, we had an issue today with our train unit, we're lucky to have it installed quickly. We're happy to see you here tonight. We had a quite bad water temperature sensor, cutting our whole train, and trains have gone, gone, spotting, there's an issue. So they were to be checked that way. They already backed up, gone, as it needs to be. On that, we start tomorrow with the staff, we'll move a lot of that product out of the hallways into the C camp. So we just try to control, engine up, wrapped up, so we're looking for a small storm. And thank you, I'm sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I know the next item on the agenda is the executive session, but I don't know how long we're going to be in there. So I'm going to do the buildings and ground sections B and C for now, so that Nick can do this thing if you need it.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna do that before we go into the executive session. So building and grounds items B and C.
Okay, item B, sanitary line change order, part two. Be resolved, Board of Education approves, thank you, approves the change order to K&amp;K Plumbing. Company Incorporated in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents for the plumbing construction work associated with digging up and replacing the sanitary line in B-119. After the sanitary line was exposed in B-123, K&amp;K was able to see that the sanitary line rose approximately five inches in the wrong direction, which is why the line was backing up and did not allow the water to drain. Exposing and replacing the sanitary line in B-119 should be in the second step in resolving the issue. This change order does not include the ceramic tile patch. Anybody nominate? Okay.
Okay, oh, we have a motion.
Yeah.
Look at Mike, Mr. Mike Basil. You want Mr. Jerry Krumenacher? Okay, that is what I'm thinking of. We need to add anything, Carol? Was that self-explanatory? That was a pretty big motion, so. Anything we need to know about that, Nick? Other than that motion, wait, spell it out?
No, it just says five inches in the wrong direction. That's why everything's backing up right that direction. There in that area, there's a lot going on.
Okay.
How many feet are being replaced? How many feet is that, that would be replaced?
In B-123, they tore up, I want to say like twelve feet or so. In 119, which is the room next to it, I want to say it's like somewhere around sixteen-ish, sixteen to twenty feet. And it's five feet down, ceramic tile.
That doesn't exclude, it says a ceramic tile, that's just digging in.
Yeah, that's just.
Okay, so this motion kind of falls hand in hand to the next motion.
It does.
I would like information on both. Discuss the second motion. Or agenda?
Let's, let's read it, and then we'll approve it together, okay? We'll combine.
Okay, item C, sanitary line change order, part three. Be resolved, Board of Education approves a change order to K&amp;K Plumbing and Company Incorporated in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents for the plumbing construction work associated with digging up and replacing the sanitary line in B-126. Exposing and replacing the sanitary line in B-126 would be the third step in resolving the issue. If K&amp;K is not able to provide enough fall in the sanitary line after replacing it in B-119 and B-123, B-126 would provide enough fall in the sanitary line after replace, oh, go read that again, sorry. Would need exposed and replaced to obtain enough fall for the sanitary line to drain. This change order does not include the ceramic tile patch. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mark, Mark Krumenacher? Jerry Krumenacher? Okay, are there any questions on that?
So, so it's not one or the other, we're approving the both?
Both, right then.
They're two different areas because of the B-19 and the B-1.
I think it's.
Yeah, if B-119 resolves it, then we do not need to go any further. Ideally, it does, but with that five inch rise, we need to make sure we get enough fall, so it'll drain. If we go that far up, and we can't get enough fall by there, they may need to go into the next room over then to just have more area so that there's negative fall in the practice area.
It's an extension of the person.
Right. I understand, yeah. And Carol, do you feel this is necessary as well? Because you're working at the end with them as well.
Um, yeah, the water has to drain. That's the bottom line.
Obviously, we need it. I mean, drains have to, I think it drops, or it drops, I understand. I'm just curious, you guys all scrutinize the cost all the time of these change orders, I know. When you're twelve feet, sixteen thousand dollars, that sounds obviously extremely expensive, even five feet down. I'm just curious. I mean, they're digging entirely, so they gotta, I guess, cut a concrete floor and dig down five feet somehow.
Yeah, it's extremely labor intensive. Like, in B-123, it was all done by hand. They're hauling all the material out by, bringing all the material in by hand. Wheelbarrowing all in, all of the concrete, by hand, to fill it all back up. It's just, it's a lot of work.
Okay, can we do rated waves on this, right?
Yes, really.
So prevailing rates for, let's, a couple hundred hours, do you draw like that, it seems like? Based on what, I guess, prevailing rates would be?
Uh, I mean, I could pull their labor rates from P A girl, I'm sure. I mean, they had, whenever they were working on it, they had, I think they had three or four guys. And that was just to get down there. I mean, they have, they're not even done with the first part because they can't cut that out until, you know, the next step.
I can have, according to the journeyman plumber, the base rate is thirty-nine eighty-seven an hour. The plumber, thirty-two dollars an hour. Oh, and fringe benefits, I'm sorry, let me, the plumber is seventy-three dollars.
Yeah, I can say sixty or seventy.
And plumber is forty-five dollars now. So there's close to six thousand dollars for labor costs with the plumber and almost four thousand dollars with the plumber. That's about ten thousand dollars there.
I'm just thinking about these, I'm just curious. I'm just thinking about it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll do, all in favor, item B? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item C, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay. That takes care of that problem, right? Nothing else involved? Nothing else we need to adjust on that project? Okay, Nick, anything else we need on the project? Okay. Be resolved, Board of Education will enter into executive session at 6:23 PM to discuss litigation, contracts, students, and personnel. I will make that motion. Second by Mr. Carol Lee. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I do not know how long it's going to take, Buck, that's why we went to those things first. Okay. Okay, we were doing the meeting on August 6th to 24th at eight forty, I'm sorry, seven forty-seven PM. Okay, we're going to go through this agenda as fast as we can, without much of an audience here, and facing just people who know the agenda. You guys all have it in front of you. I don't see any reason to read it to each other, since you're reading it with us. So we're just going to go through it real quick, okay? So in fact, in fact, I'm going to, I'm going to take control of this today. So we're going to go buildings and grounds, item A, sponsor, the sponsor agreement, everybody has it in front of you. I'll make the motion. Second by Mr. Jerry Krumenacher, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we did item B and item C, but we're going to go to business and finance, Mark Krumenacher. Item A, PSB unemployment compensation assurance. This is that part that I, I said about, I could not make out from the secretary. So I'm going to table, I'd like the motion to table that until we can read it next time, the specifics. I'll make a motion to table. Second by Mrs. Carol Lee. Since there's no questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's to table, okay? Item B, probate insurance, we need, I mean, you all had a thing on that. Does anyone have any questions on what was said to us? Okay, we'll put that on for the next, for the regular meeting. Item C, getting protective security, this is just a discussion on it. We did that in the executive session. Think about it for the next time, see if we want to put it on or not, okay? Okay, item D, Knox Law Firm, everybody had that, we talked about it in the executive session. I'll make the motion. Second by Mrs. Mark Krumenacher. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item B, the Stephen B. Casher student evaluation, we also talked about in the executive session. This is going to be put on for a vote in the regular meeting. Everyone okay with that? Okay, item F, Chromebook covers. Everybody has it in front of you. I'll make the motion for Chromebook covers. Sorry, Mr. Mike Basil, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Norma, did you have a question?
Not good, man.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item G, school psychologist contract. Everybody, we talked about this, same thing. You have it in front of you. I'm going to guess this is the one from Acorn to Oaks. This is the online one, I guess? Okay, I'll make a motion for that. Second by Mrs. Mark Krumenacher, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item H, part-time intern psychologist contract. Everybody has it in front of you. We talked about that also. I'll make the motion for that. Roll call. I'm sorry, anybody have a? Mr. Mike Basil's second. Alright, any questions or comments on that? Roll call.
Dr. Krupp?
No.
Mrs. Krupp?
No.
Mr. Krumenacher?
No.
Mrs. Krumenacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bassel?
Yes.
That's a failure, reason for fails. Motion fails. Also, you need, since it is a more than a hundred dollars, you have to have five for a vote to approve that. You have to have a majority, okay? So item I, appliance purchases for life skills room, everybody has it in front of you. I will make a motion for that. Second by Mrs. Norma Krug, any questions or comments on that? All in favor? Okay, anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Alright, we, we have four opposed, so that thing fails all simple. Okay, we'll roll call it. Sorry about that.
Mrs. Krupp?
No.
Mr. Krumenacher?
No.
Mrs. Krumenacher?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Bassel?
Yes.
Dr. Krupp?
No.
Motion fails.
There is a failure. That was what, one to five?
Yes.
Or one to six, I mean?
One to five.
One to five.
One to five.
Okay, item J, title one, services contract, everybody has it in front of them. This is for the St. Nicholas Academy, we talked about. I'll make the motion. Second by Mr. Jerry Krumenacher, any questions or comments on that? How about all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, item K expenditures, we didn't talk about this, but you have it in front of you. This is the one where they want to have, they want to have us revisit our two thousand limit to go to twelve thousand, six hole threshold. This is the one where they wanna have, they wanna have us re, re, uh, revisit our two thousand limit to go to twelve thousand six hole threshold.
Do you wanna read this one?
Okay, be resolved that the Board of Education discussed and approved granting the superintendent business manager and maintenance supervisor the collective authority to approve services and or equipment. Under the federal threshold limit of twelve thousand six hundred dollars, as deemed necessary by the three individuals listed in this motion, to ensure the continuous operations of the district, okay? Do we have a motion? Motion, Mrs. Mark Crimmonaker? There is Mr. Mike Basil? Any questions or comments on that? Roll call.
Mister Crimmonaker?
No.
Mrs. Crimmonaker, no. Lee, no. Mister Basil?
Yeah.
Doctor Crook?
No.
Mrs. Crook, no.
Okay, item A, under community relations, item Hall, or item A, Town Hall Meeting, we're gonna have another Town Hall, Town Hall Meeting, which, uh, Dr. Sonic says we'll have next Wednesday, I believe, at seven P M. Okay, I don't think we need to learn on that, so. Item B, Backpack Project, B was, uh, you have it in front of you, you have the appendix in the back, it's about the backpack, County Camry County Backpack Project. Um, for, I guess, all schools belong to that, so, or should belong, so I'll make the motion for that. Second by Mrs. Norma Krug. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do they, they receive a backpack to bring, bring in, do they return that backpack?
No, they put them in disposable bags, it's not, it's actually not a backpack.
Okay.
It used to be a drawstring bag, but they don't even do that anymore, they just look like a giant eagle type bag.
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, curriculum instruction, item A, three K program agreement, everybody has that in front of you, the P, the three K agreement. Uh, if you looked at your appendix number ten, did you notice about that, so I'll make the motion. My second by Mr. Mike Basil, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, the elementary municipal plans, um, the board and the P D, this is gonna be on for the next meeting, um. Oh, maybe you can explain that a little bit, cause I, just, I, here's the note.
So, our elementary and our middle school were designated as T S I schools by P D E. T S I school means that we have a subgroup of students that are not showing growth. Uh, according to P V A S, according to standardized testing. So, P D E requires us to focus on those or build a plan of how we're going to make sure that those students are achieving and growing to their best, uh, best potential. Title I has always had to do a plan that we get approved by P D E. They are also now designated as T S I, our middle school was also designated as T S I, or high school and small, this is not small, this is not, they're coming in to take over anything, this is just. So, a warning, so to speak, to be looking at our information. We're very hopeful that Lincoln will help us target and look at our data a lot better so that we can make sure that these kids are, so, we'll share that with you. Uh, it's uploaded, but we do need the board to vote and sign it next month.
So, are we throwing a red flag somewhere?
We didn't do it, they, they red flagged us.
Why?
Special ed population was not showing growth, and not red.
All right, legislation, policy development, all those policies there, uh, there's a policy on bullying, cyberbullying, for the first reading, these are, you can read these at your own leisure, okay? Pretty much just wording changes with most of them. Um, item C, student handbook changes, be resolved, Board of Education, discuss and approve the changes to the twenty-four parent handbook, and teacher, and the student teacher handbooks also, I'll make the motion. Second by Mr. Mike Basil. If anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I will oppose. So, four, five, I can't, I can't, sorry. Okay, item D, employee handbook, um, everybody has it in front of you, you can read it at your leisure, uh, make the motion for that. Mr. Mike Basil, any questions, comments?
Do you need to table that?
Employee handbook? No. Unless you wanted to.
Those were just questions that you had?
No, they were answered, okay, we talked about in the executive session, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Item B, the clear backpack, clear water bottle procedures, now these are administrative procedures, they are not policies, okay, so, um. Uh, be, be resolved, Board of Education supports administration practices for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, considering the use of clear backpacks and water bottles. Now, from what I read about the changes in the thing, the clear backpacks or mesh backpacks were K through four, and the water bottles were. Elementary, middle school, K through twelve.
Why is none of this in the motion?
In the handbook changes. Anybody have a motion? Second by Mrs. Norma Krug. Once? Twice? It fails for lack of motion. Okay. Personnel resignation.
Can I just interject one thing regarding the business, I know there was a question on that box, what that is, is school districts. Uh, paid to unemployment, not like a regular business, regular businesses pay to the P A U C fund, Commonwealth P A, repay in the box. And that's what covers the employees for the district, it still goes through the Pennsylvania unemployment agents, the department, but. It's, it's funded through, through the box, so that's what that's for, anyway, and they fight, and, and they think, decide if there's an unemployment. Uh, question, if someone is, uh, and if, they feel that it was a, uh, if someone quit, and it was without a reason, they fight for the district. With their, their group and their attorneys to fight the, uh, any of the unemployment costs.
What's the P S B A one for then?
What's that?
There's a, we have a P S B A one in the back where I think, what's that one for?
That's the P S B A.
That's the box thing?
That's the box.
Okay, the only reason we tabled it wrong is because what, what, what Donna sent us was illegible. The, the, the explanation, whatever, that sheet that we got, you can't even read it, that's why we did that, you can bring it back up for the regular meeting if you want.
All right, I just want you to know that's what that is.
Okay.
Anything else for me? I haven't figured anything in.
Uh, we're not paying any bills, right? So, we're, yeah, we're good. Okay, uh, personnel resignation, um. Uh, this is for Mr. Stossel, the five-hour custodian, I'll make the motion. Second by Jerry Crimmonaker, any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, item Bs for policy eight, eight fifteen, point one, we talked about that up in the next session, I'll make the motion. Second by Mrs. Norma Krug, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, I do.
Opposed, any roll call please?
Okay, we'll roll call.
Mrs. Crimmon, Mrs. Crimmonaker?
Yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Lee, yes. Mister Basil?
Yes.
Doctor Crook?
No.
Mrs. Crook?
No.
Mister Crimmonaker?
No. That should fail.
Okay, item C, school position, everybody has that in front of you, it's Doctor Santorelli again, apparently, um, so I'll make the motion. Second by Mrs. Norma Krug, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, the creative new parent educator position, we discussed that in executive session, we can put that on for the, okay? A sabbatical leave is for employee, employee number four eighty-nine. Um, that is for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five entire school year, I'll make that motion. Second by Mr. Jerry Crimmonaker, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a resignation of a teacher's aide, um, Monica Phillips, I'll make the motion for that. Second by Mrs. Mark Crimmonaker, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, then we have the next one, this higher parent education with a vacant position, um, at a, at a cost of eleven twenty-five per hour, everybody has it in front of you for five hours, I'll make the motion for that.
We have the names, please?
I don't have them.
Jenna, I don't know, so.
I, I'm sorry, you got to spell that.
J E N N A. Macaluso, M A C A L U S O.
Everybody got that? I made the motion, second by Mrs. Mark Crimmonaker. Roll call, oh, I'm sorry, anybody question or comments first, roll call.
Mrs. Lee? Yes. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Doctor Crook?
No.
Mrs. Crook? Uh, no. Mister Crimmonaker?
No.
Mrs. Crimmonaker?
Yes.
Is that free, free again?
Motion fails.
Free, free, okay, resignation, uh, of Mister Chad Butterbaum as a teacher with regret, uh, asleep, uh, he has twenty-four years with our district, so we'll wish him well. Uh, I'll make the motion for that. Second by Mr. Jerry Crimmonaker. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mister Butterbaum, for all your service. All right, staff development, Ju eight, um, you, you have a paper in your, in your agenda, you can look at it. Um, that was for discussion, is there anything else we need to know other than this discussion we had? Okay, uh, new teacher induction, Ju eight, we, we asked a question in the executive session for that, this is for a, um, a program that they would take for the new teachers that threw the Ju eight. Any questions on that, we'll put them both on the agenda for the next time? Okay, good, all right, item C's parent educators week, which we asked about in the executive session too, this is a program that they take, bring them up to speed, I guess, that's required by the P S B A, so I will make that motion. Second by Mr. Mike Basil, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Student activity, Mister Mike Basil, item A, fundraiser calendar, everybody has that in their appendix, um, I'll make the motion for that. Second by Mr. Mike Basil, questions or comments by anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, she carries.
Okay, therapy dogs, we're gonna discuss therapy dogs next time, now, I think we might need to discuss this a little bit, so what's up with this?
So, um, Lisa Prebisch, uh, breeds dogs, she had, just had a liter of puppies, and we have had coming into the schools therapy dogs. The P C C D money can be used for training these dogs for that reason. Um, the Botec has one, and their supervisor says it's the cheapest guidance counselor he's ever had, but it's just been great for the students, great for the teachers. So, Lisa has two puppies that she's kept, um, she would take them through the training, she'd do at least one she'd love to start with, and then look for funding for another one. I can, uh, the training P C C D grant will pay for the training, um, of course, the dog would continue to be hers, uh, she would bring the dog to school and would serve us as a therapy dog. So, it's something she wanted to approach the subject and see if the board would be interested in letting her do that.
Would there be a, a commitment in terms of the amount of time that, uh, the dog is kind of brought here, or, I would, I mean?
That would make sense, I think definitely that could be something that the board could say, I would expect she would bring it every day. The dog would be with her every day.
It is for the veterinary trust, because that can be quite expensive.
It can be, I would say that it's, if it's remaining her dog, she pays for that.
They're like additional insurance, the school would have to get.
That, that's a good question.
Are we not worried about the school becoming a healthcare facility versus a educational facility?
Because then what we do about this is more becomes a, a, a healthcare facility, I warned against this, years ago, we did the diabetes thing, policy, right from the beginning.
And it's getting just more involved all the time, I just wonder, are we worried about that becoming a, a problem, because it seems like it is.
Mental health is a problem, yes, I, I, and so, we have to break down those barriers as an education institution. And if something as simple as having a dog is able to break down those barriers and enable that, um, then that's a, a cheap and inexpensive way to do that. We are an educational institution, but we also have to be able to educate our students to the best of our ability, and that does include meeting, mental health needs, sometimes health needs.
My fear is we're becoming more of a healthcare facility than we are a school facility, that's just my opinion.
All right, we can put that on for the next meeting.
Lisa would be responsible for it.
So, we, she did got counsel, right? So, when, when she gonna have time to do her other job?
She would do it while the dog is with her, or the dog is with the guidance counselor.
All, all, very, very.
She'd have to do everything.
Okay, transportation, item A, bus driver approval, everybody had those in front of you, the, the bus driver list on your appendix, I'll make the motion. There's Jerry Crimmonaker, questions or comments? Want me to get satisfied with what you saw?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Vehicle list, same thing, was on the back of your appendix, um, I'll make the motion. Second by Mr. Mike Basil, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, the bus routes, everybody saw those, they usually go in the paper later on, and who gets picked up, where, when, and how, um. Pretty lengthy, I think, some of this stuff, so, um, I'll make the motion. Second by Mrs. Mark Crimmonaker, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, athletics, increased pay for officials, which, uh, pretty much, very much overdue to stay competitive, so, you have it in front of you, what they're gonna be, I'll make the motion for that. Second by Mrs. Carol Lee, any questions or comments on those amounts? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, athletic trainers, we have to discuss adding another trainer, to fill voids in games where the other ones aren't supposed, supposedly gonna be there now, I guess, so, anything we need to add to that?
So, this was a request by the athletic director, he has someone in mind, and the cost would be forty-five dollars per. And again, this would not be something where we would have three or four at one, it would be to cover things such as, uh, like junior high football and soccer games.
Okay, my question is on that, if you use that as an example, junior high football, soccer, use the same field? Do they not, if they're both long games?
Not the soccer games we're up in. They're down here, junior high, yes, but they might be different months.
Okay, I don't understand this, but, okay, you wanna put it on or not, guys?
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think it is either, but that's fine, I can put it on for a vote.
It, it doesn't sound like it's extra cost, it sounds like it's just.
And that's for forty-five bucks?
So, other, we have our, yeah.
Okay.
At least that way I interpret it.
Did anybody want this on, somebody want this on?
How, how are you interpreting it?
I'm reading it, it says, uh, just add a third trainer to the staff to fill voids in games that they're not able to cover, not a trainer at the same time. It, it's like.
On a nasty basis, like, they're not.
That's, that's why I'm reading out, my reading, I, I, I'm reading, it's just a third trainer in a pool of trainers that they pulled from, am I reading that wrong?
So, he's, yes, what he's asking for is that games that don't have trainers, he's asking for this third person to cover those, so normally, there are no trainers at junior high football or soccer games. So, we have, uh, Melanie Nar and Erica Anderson who cover the games, and they ask that the board discuss adding a third trainer to our staff to fill voids in games we aren't able to cover.
So, I guess it would be an extra cost to a time.
It is going to be an extra cost, because right now, we have games that don't have athletic training.
So, we have three home events at the same exact time?
It's a, it's a.
No, 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 but it might be a day they can't make it, maybe one of them can't be there. No, 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 but it might be a day they can't make it, maybe one of them can't be there for something. So not that there's three events on one night, but maybe it's a night that Melanie Nar can't be there. And maybe it's a night that Erica Anderson can't be there, so this would be our third go-to person.
Okay, we used to have only one athletic trainer, and then we did, um, we did hire a second one to help us out um, for when that person couldn't be there. That was the whole point of hiring a second person, and we still have games that there's no one there, so it's up to the board if they want. If not, we'll just continue on as we have.
Okay, my question, do you want this on the next meeting for a vote? I'd like it, so, okay, that's one.
No. No.
I don't need it, Mark, you need?
No.
Okay, don't put it on. Okay, assistant coaches, uh, this is, you can see them in front of you. Um, I'm not gonna read that, so I'll make the motion. There's Mike Basil, any questions or comments?
Are, are, uh, some of these coaches new?
Joey, I know, I know Chase, like, she coached last year, and obviously Kim's been her last year, I'm hoping to go with the Joey jersey.
That's a new one.
Is that the correct salary for a first starting year starting coach?
Karen? I did, that was the salary I received from, uh, Dan Page, yeah, yeah.
Why does that not look to me?
Let's see, for sure.
Yeah.
Good, let me look. I can find it. Or be in the contract for somebody who has the contract with.
I do.
I just don't think that figure's correct.
It's in your top years, we really get a percent of your income, so it'd be at least two years behind your salary, so.
How do we need for?
And what are they for?
They're, they're coaching different levels, I know, she's one that oversee junior high, one sees junior high, one sees. I guess I would see them under, maybe they're going off. Seven to eight, JV.
Base salary you hire assistants.
I don't know, give it to us, I guess, Jason could pull, yeah, Joey.
Thirty-four hundred bucks. Thirty-four hundred bucks, JV, first year, base salary you hire.
And they're, and, and all of them needs three?
Ed, you need a they're probably, I don't know if they're splitting up, probably eighth and seventh grade into two now.
Yeah, that must be replaced.
Jamie.
For, for practice.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
Alright, uh, we're gonna do roll call.
Okay. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Doctor Crook?
No.
Mrs. Crook?
No.
Mr. Krimenacher?
Oh, no.
Mrs. Krimenacher? So, no. Mrs. Lee, no. Uh, motion fails.
One to, uh, one to five. Okay, I guess that's it. Anything else, anybody, I guess not, it's not committed in the whole, so, uh, be resolved, committee of the whole meeting of the Northern Camry School Board for August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, be adjourned at eight seventeen P M. I'll make the motion for that. Senator Mr. Jared Krimenacher, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?